I'd like to call for the council meeting Monday in March 14, 2016, 7:00 PM. The opening prayer, Mr. Adam Swinney, the new pastor of Mission Futures.
First part of the prayer that you guys pray together. I think that's really cool that the kindness of faith, the background of people coming together at the fellow's hands, so let's pray. God, thanks for who you are. You're good, you love us. Thank you for these men and women that you've raised up to make decisions for this city. I pray that you would grant them the wisdom, the patience that is required with meetings like this, and ultimately that your hand, your sovereign hand, would be over it so that we understand these decisions and things that we are. Just something inherent that comes from ourselves but are part of something much bigger. Thank you for who you are.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is this all? Here? Here?
Here.
Here.
Here? Thank you. In your consideration, we have a motion and second to approve as presented. The council meeting events in March 14, 2016, special committee of all meeting events, March 14, 2016. Motion to approve as presented.
Thank you.
Yes.
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 Thank you. And may I have a motion and a second to put some time aside right now for Mr. Todd Hauer, his robotics team? So, say aye, aye, and put those aside. Motion carries.
Good evening. My name is Todd Hauer. I'm an engineering instructor at Hoover High School. I brought with me this evening members of our national robotics team, and I wanted to share with you their significant achievement this past couple of weeks ago. Two weeks ago, our team participated in what was called the first robotics competition, which was our local regional, was held at Cleveland State University, and we won the competition, which is the first ever for our team. The significance of that regional is that it qualified us for the world championship. I didn't say a state championship, the world championship, which will be held in St. Louis, Missouri, April 27 through 30. In addition to my engineering, teaching responsibilities, I'm also the faculty advisor for the robotics team. Our program has been in existence for approximately five years now. Our team has thirty-four members in grades nine through twelve. We have seven female members and twenty-seven male members. They come from all walks of life in the school building. They're not just engineering students. They all participate in band, football, basketball, wrestling, many other sports, plays, pretty much every walk of life throughout the building. The significance of this project is that it is a project in which the students built that little robot, you see to the left of me, in six weeks, meaning that we had no idea what the competition is. We were told first weekend of January, and from that day forward, you have six weeks exactly to build the robot and then wrap it up. So they have to design it. They are taught several woodworking, metalworking skills. They will use computerated design software to come up with the design completely on their own. We have adult mentors that have professional experience within the industry that come in and help, but it is their project. We are theirs to guide and help. Now, within that six-week period or so, these thirty-four students logged well over eleven-hundred man-hours, meaning that this is, oh, sorry, two thousand man-hours. This is a completely after-school project. We mean six days a week. Many times it's from three o'clock till about nine o'clock at night when we're at the school building. So they're very dedicated groups. It's also a very positive project. This team raises between twelve and fourteen thousand dollars every year through fundraising efforts. They are pleased that the robot will be part of the program. In the meantime, I want to let two senior captains this year, President Zach Falkner is going to discuss with you the project itself, the competition, and what lies ahead. But into the future, for April 27 through 30, one of our goals also is outreach. We go forth and spread the good word of STEM, if you will. So we are tasked with spreading what STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics is throughout our community and encouraging more students to go through those programs and maybe one day to join our program as well and go on with the activities that we do. But in the coming weeks, if you haven't already seen it, we are fundraising currently right now. For us to go to St. Louis, we need to raise fifteen thousand dollars. So already, and with one week, they've raised sixty-two hundred dollars, just through fundraising efforts. So they're very motivated. So when you need money, you may need these guys. You may need it, and you'll get it. But I'd like to introduce Zach to you real quick, and he's going to talk to you a bit more about the program.
I'm Zach Falkner. I am a senior Hoover, and I am the president of the team. So, live and up team, we have, as we said, we have about forty members, and it took, and we, those forty members spent about two thousand total man-hours for the robot. So we participated in the first robotics competition. First, they're a nonprofit organization, and they help encourage kids and give them experiences in STEM and encourage kids to go to STEM careers, including medicine and engineering. And there are around forty countries that have first revised teams, so it's not just a nationality, it is international. And thirty-nine countries will actually be represented at St. Louis that we will be working with, because we don't have to just work with our team, we have to be able to work with other teams too. There'll actually be around six hundred teams by the time it happens. We are currently the number-one team in the state of Ohio because of our win at Cleveland.
Hi, I'm Will Suppins. I am the project manager of our robotics team. Our game this year was called First Draw Code, and it had a visual theme. The basic strategy of it was to, there's defenses to go over, like there's a draw bridge you had to go over, and rough terrain, like a six-inch wall that you, if you're alive, would be able to go over. And then there are bullies, which are just dodgeballs that you can pick up and shoot into high overloads. The high overload is around seven feet off the ground. So there's a vision system. We have a camera that's able to look and help us see where to shoot. Then there's also the climb, which there's a, like a pull-up bar about six feet off the ground. And at like the last twenty seconds of the game, you go up to this pull-up bar and extend or something out of your robot to be able to climb and hook onto this pull-up bar and have your robot lift that piece off the ground, and you get extra points for that. Our climb is currently on it. It's a bit iffy. We're still trying to break down the hints, but I think by our ability, we should be able to get that part in.
We'll officially demonstrate the robot this evening, and we're not still actually in competition though, which means we have to change over for our amateur team to take our current computer. But one of the things we're going to try to do is this simulates as much of a real-world engineering project as it would look like, meaning our team is broken up into subdivisions. We have a design team, a mechanical team. That team is broken down into each individual mechanism. Our picker-upper shooter, if you'll put that up, please. Which can articulate up and down. It has wheels that spin both directions, which it can suck in and all, stir it out just like a pitching machine does. Yes, there's a five-gallon bucket that they slapped on the front of it. It also has a little servo mechanism, which is a little arm that kicks the ball forward so it can be spit out. On the back, they talked about a climber. Pull the climber up, please. Our climber, possibly, is actually a measuring tape. Kids took apart a measuring tape, and it reaches up seven feet, grabs onto a bar, lifts itself up off the ground. In addition to that, the chassis itself, we will talk about the different terrains and obstacles that you had to go over. The chassis itself, those wheels in that chassis are designed specifically to be able to withstand the ragers of those particular events or those defenses that we had to go over and under. The little force on the front, to go underneath the wall, can lift up a wall so it can crawl under. It can also take a teeter totter, if you will, push it down so it can crawl over. So the idea behind this, in addition to this, is being able to accomplish multiple tasks, and this can do several things, within a very short period of time. So in addition to just having your hands on the robot, we have a business plan team. We have a group of students that go out and they communicate, go via social media and also through the newspaper. I saw the newspaper a few weeks ago. We were featured on the front page of the Kine Repository. But we have a group that also is in charge of those things, community outreach. So we have kids that don't just necessarily have to put their hands on the robot themselves. We have a lot of students that really don't care to do that, but they enjoy the other aspects of it. We have kids that where their sole responsibility was strategy. Unlike, not unlike a football or basketball team, we scout the other teams. They scout us. And if you saw the scouting book, you'd be rather impressed. It looks about as thick as an NFL book. Our strat, our main strategy person can pretty much tell you the performance of any robot that goes out of our competition. Why? So we know who to pick. When we go forward, who do we want to work with? How do we match up with other teams? This is considered to be a sport for robotics. We treat it just like we do a varsity sport. The kids put in as much time as any varsity athlete. I was a wrestling coach for fifteen years in a college wrestling. Went through athletics all my life. We work as hard at this as I ever did in college wrestling. They put in as much time as I ever did working through a coach, as a head coach here at Hoover, as an assistant coach here at Hoover, or any other student that I had. So I have a great deal of respect for what these kids go through and what they do. So it means a great deal of their accomplishments, and they're very happy and proud of our invite. And thank you very much, Mr. Goodwin, for inviting us this evening. When they get a chance to talk about their program, they'll be very excited. And I use you for them. This Sunday, we'll be up in Cleveland. We're going to be on Channel 18 News. There's Sunday Morning Show, so we'll be on there from 3:00 AM to 9:00 AM talking about our robot. So the word's getting out, and hopefully we'll be seeing more things to come in the future. Again, thank you for your time. We very much appreciate it.
Just a couple of things for you guys. I think it comes from all of us. We're very proud of you. I know at Hoover, we'd like a win, right? And there's so much you guys are learning in this. First of all, Coach, fantastic job. This is, this is something that's even greater sometimes than, you know, that you can even imagine. But you're learning things here, not just in school, which is great, but in the future here. I mean, you guys, probably most of you are engineers, I would imagine, or want to be an engineer. My son would do Cincinnati Engineering, one of my younger sons. And you guys are way ahead. They did this stuff in college, like their third, fourth, and fifth year. So you are, guys are way ahead in this program here, which is kudos to Hoover and that whole program over there. But stuff you're learning for the future here, you mentioned stuff, you're talking about goals, you're talking about your structure, of, boy, you want to use a product manager? That's corporate stuff. That's fantastic. And then you probably have your fundraising group, and, I mean, that stuff is way out, and then you, I don't even get a name for that, but it's like a guy that's got all that stuff on there. And, you know, to improvise, adapt, and overcome, I guess that's a huge thing. So kudos to you guys. We're very proud of you on that kind of thing. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Best of luck.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yes, alright.
Thanks, guys. Thanks for everything.
How much does the device weigh?
About a hundred pounds.
Oh, wow.
It has a hundred and twenty pounds weight, though.
Doesn't it have a name?
Diners.
Does it?
Diners. It's not a native rock. He took me to Navy Park. He do have Navy costumes. We have our own Navy costumes.
Take care of that. Take care. Alright, before we get to recognition of visitors, we have an ordinance on the agenda, 3216. We're missing the attachment for that, which is referenced by this ordinance. So I would like a motion and a second to table ordinance 3216, further discussion, and awaiting the attachment.
A motion?
Yes.
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 Seven yes, and table order on 3216.
Alright, at this time, if you wish to address council, please step forth, state your name and address. Couple things before we do, the rules of council around the dais there. We have five minutes to speak. At the end of five minutes, the last PPS will turn your seats. There will be no back and forth between council and the speaker during public speaking portion. If you need to address council after the fact, if you want that, then you move on. So with that being said, if anyone wishes to address council, please step forth, state your name and address.
Dr. Osborne, 307 Fairview Streets, southeast, North Camp, Ohio. That is the topic of my conference tonight is ordinance 3216. Last, well, it's been two or three weeks ago, this council doesn't need very frequently, you can forget what's going on. But from what I gather of the presentation here of the 14, I guess it was, there was a comment by Mr. Bowles, "The average age of homes in North Camp is seventy-two years." And I'm presuming that is the focus of creating the CRA and spreading it throughout the city. I'm a recipient of the CRA. When it was first created, I filled out the paperwork, free money. But let me tell you, that in no way was the incentive for me to spend and improve my home. Had actually no bearing. The home is the home of my wife. Her parents bought it in 1946. She's lived there since 1949. Strictly sentimental value, and she's going to live there until she dies. We spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to improve a house that was appraised at a hundred and fifteen. And now it raises for about a hundred and thirty-five. Clearly not a good economic decision. I was competing, but we figured we would enjoy fruits of our efforts. It was a long ordeal. We did a lot of our old work. We had to hold back into the house, opened up through a window, because we reluctantly had enjoyed our first choice of a builder, and I fired him within a week. At any rate, we lucked onto a builder that was this Peaslee, who was down the street from us. Next was a quality craftsman, Ty Michael. I'll give him a hug. And he's a quality person. So if your goal is to take on these old homes around town and hope that people are going to fix them up, you have to make a substantial investment. You have to increase the value of the property. Just because you put on wood, first siding, or paint, it's not going to necessarily change the valuation of your home. What really disturbs me is what you're doing to the city's and the schools' finances. All we've heard here for years now, coming out of recession, is how the schools and the city are trying to increase revenue. And you're turning around and declining to accept revenue. And then to hear that you're going to include new homes, what a sales pitch for Mr. Fontaine, who, by the way, I talked to earlier today. He has a huge conflict of interest weighing on this issue. For him to vote on this and then to go out and pitch to prospective buyers, hey, we can give you taxes-free for ten, I don't know, a hundred and fifteen years. Now, tax abatement, my wife and I, we were paying basically eighty percent of the taxes on the home. The remainder was abated for ten years. So we were at least contributing to the services we received and contributing to the schools. This is a bad deal. In fact, I think you are eliminating the CRAs. You're cutting your own throats. And I guarantee you, if it ever passes, I will never vote for a school again. And I haven't been inclined for the last number of years. Does this take the schools out of the picture now? They no longer get to weigh in on tax abatement like they do on businesses? And I might add, all the business abatement you have given, they didn't factor into the decision. Mr. Bowles ran up to acting lately a number of years ago, happily announced they were going to expand us more, and said, hey, we can give you some more money. You're creating unhappiness in the entire tax system. Why should somebody in the sanctuary get tax-free for ten or fifteen years while all of us other schmucks are paying our taxes? This is all totally wrong, and I would encourage you to shelve the entire idea.
Lieutenant Taylor, 342 Avenue, northwest, North Camp, Ohio. Come tonight also to talk about the CRA and kind of dovetail on what Barry Bowman said at the last meeting. If you reference the Ohio Revised Code, that section that defines what a CRA is, says specifically, it's an area, quote, "in which housing facilities or structures of historical significance are located, and new housing, construction, and repair of existing facilities or structures are discouraged." So I think it's very hard, and I almost have to do mental contortionism to consider the sanctuary that kind of an area of the city. It just does not fit within that definition. I've also got some other questions about some other portions of the legislation. Section five, paragraph A, there is a ten years for the remodeling, but elements containing not more than two units, upon which the cost of remodeling is at least fifteen thousand dollars. If you reference the section of the Ohio Revised Code that's talking about this, and it's pretty easy to do, so I would recommend that everybody do their own homework and not delegate that to somebody else. But it says that legislative authorities in that year can determine the percentage of exemption and how many years the exemption is. But it doesn't give you the authority to say, in this case, that the remodeling costs have to be at least fifteen thousand dollars, because it says specifically in that section of the Ohio Revised Code that the remodeling costs be at least two thousand five hundred dollars. And then for the second section where you're saying that remodeling costs have to be at least fifteen thousand dollars, that section of the revised code says five thousand dollars. So again, you have the authority to designate the percentage of the exemption or the period of time that the exemption's for, but I see nothing in those sections of the Ohio Revised Code that allow you to change the amounts that people have to spend in order to qualify. Mrs. Peaslee had mentioned at the last meeting, too, that she, at first glance, didn't see anything within this ordinance that covered new construction. I don't see anything in here either that covers new construction. New construction is covered in that same section, D4, specifically covers new construction. That's not at all referenced in this ordinance at all. Another section I had concern about is section six, where this council determines that the city shall waive the collection of all local annual monitoring fees to one percent of the taxes exempted. And this is in regards to industrial, commercial exemptions that have anything to do with residential. But the ORC allows you to collect one percent of the exempted amount in order to cover the expenses in regards to that. There's another fee that you collect that goes to the state that you don't, that you won't see at all, but the state's allowing you a one percent collection to cover some of those fees in regards to the CRA. And there are expenses and fees involved there, so I really don't understand why this council would not want to collect that one percent fee. I mean, you're giving an entity a hundred percent tax abatement, and you're asking them to give you one percent back? I mean, that's a pretty good deal for them. So again, I think all these things should be taken into consideration, and hopefully, like I said, everybody does a little bit of research on around there and brings some of these to light.
Good evening. Naomi Jerrim, 308 Port Street, North Camp. This evening, I wish to speak to ordinance 322016, Community Reinvestment Area. As you all know, I'm an advocate for the city's neighborhoods, and I'm in favor of nudging property owners to maintain their properties. The CRA could be a tool to help a family, whether they have a kitchen or bathroom, and receive tax relief on those added features to their home. The intent of a CRA being, others in the neighborhood would take more pride in their homes as well. Sometimes this is the case, but many times there is no effect on surrounding properties. If the map of the proposed area of the CRA that was presented at the March 14 meeting is correct, both the properties of the sanctuary and Arrowhead are excluded. I'm not sure whether that's going to be in effect, so I think it's still under consideration. But I do believe that this is a wise decision to exclude those areas, and perhaps the seven lots between Glenwood and Summit should also be excluded. Having newly constructed home, perhaps in the two thousand to five hundred thousand dollar range, be exempt from the school, rather, please fire me as levies, I believe is not fair. How will those folks who have supported all of these levies over many years, including myself, feel about this arrangement of those folks not paying their fair share? And would this have an effect on the city or the school district passing levies in the future? I believe it would. Section 5C of the legislation indicates the exemption on new construction will be for fifteen years, and I believe at a hundred percent on the dwelling. As we know, the taxes are not on the land. Most of your taxes are on the dwelling. It is my understanding that new construction cannot be excluded from the CRAs because of the Ohio Revised Code. However, I urge council to place in this legislation a provision that any new construction be limited to an older neighborhood and only one dwelling per block. Let's tailor this CRA for folks currently living in older homes who want to improve their properties, not folks that are buying an empty lot and... Not folks that are buying an empty lot and could benefit greatly from past exclusions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marion Baumman, three fifteen, whoever I'm at. I took a ride through the sanctuary when I'm not referred to, and nothing to do with law, I'm trying to research play towns of schools. I took a ride through the sanctuary, but what I understood is that phase three and four, which are empty lots, are excluded, but that phases one and two would be part of the CRA. So I took a drive through the sanctuary and I counted thirty-seven lots that were either empty or had basements dug or were in the beginnings of construction. All thirty-seven of those lots would qualify because they would have six months after construction completed to apply. As I drove through, I also saw hundreds of kids, all sizes of kids. The sanctuary is full of kids. If you have thirty-seven prospective homes, and you add the seven lots on Glenwood, I cut my fingers, let me get this, and they have, say, two kids to each house, we're talking eighty kids adding to our school district. And their parents would be paying no taxes. We are very lucky at Hoover High School. There is no pay-in, the play provision. There are schools that I've heard of that charge the students the, the play that limits them. Sometimes they can't afford one sport. At Hoover, a kid could be into the three sports. You saw it tonight, and this fits in beautifully with what I was talking about, the robotic team. That should tax dollars for it, it's wonderful. If you allow these two hundred, oh, I forgot to tell you, the drive, the two I could see, these are three hundred, four hundred thousand dollar homes in the sanctuary. There'd probably be about two hundred thousand in Glenwood. They would get, they'd travel the roads, they're on fire, they have EMS, they have police, and their kids would be in the schools. Like was said before, it'd be awfully hard to pass a school that would be knowing that these big, big homes are paying no taxes. So I could ask them, you know, I thought Naomi had a real good idea, exclude new developments. And one in Glenwood is a mini development. Okay, there was something I forgot. Okay. Maybe I can think of, somebody else has got to speak on that.
Well, see, we do pay the play, play local. We have a lot of developments, I mean, you go down that street.
I have relatives that their daughter loved track, and she liked Glenwood. She loved tracks, she loved basketball, and she had to pick?
Yeah.
So she picked basketball, since she was so upset she couldn't run track, the parents just couldn't afford it. At Hoover, we're so lucky. Boy, I know what I was saying. If you allow this to go forward and these homes pay no taxes, you're cheating the kids. Parents have always cheated the kids.
Thank you.
Colin Riley, three ten, thirty-seventh Street, Northwest Canton, four four seven nine. My name's Colin Riley, I am the current president of the North Canton J.C.'s. I'm here representing our chapter. Uh, with me in attendance, we have our chairman of the board, Jamie McCleister, and a couple of members, Andy Yoder and Len Niggas. Um, so we've just, we discuss you guys a lot in our meetings, because you help us out a lot, not only you, but the schools as well. So first and foremost, we wanted to thank you guys for all the help you've given us over the years. Uh, it really is a lot and goes a long way in what we want to do and accomplish, not only in the communities, but our own lives as well. So first and foremost, thank you for that. We are celebrating our seventieth year as a chapter this year, so we're very excited about that. In fact, we're actually gonna have a gala at the end of the year. Uh, we have stuff going on, so if you guys want to join us for that, you're more than welcome. Um, just kind of to give a heads up on some of the other things we do and that you all are aware of. We recently had our history event over, over the weekend. We had about five hundred kids show up for that this year, um, which is a lot, so we were pretty happy and excited about that. Um, so it's a nice surprise when you get more than your expected, for sure. Um, uh, something that we're a little bit proud of is, uh, we've had about eighteen new members join since December. Uh, effectively coming close to doubling our numbers the last couple of years. So it's something we've been working on as a group, and we're really happy about that, bringing new people into the fold. Just gives us more hands on deck and the ability to do more, uh, like I said, not only for the community, but so we ourselves can grow as growing individuals. Upcoming, uh, the seven twenty market project, I'm sure you're all familiar with that to some extent. We are pretty excited to take part in that as well, just a new fun activity for the, uh, the community to help grow. And just something, always add, uh, never hurts to do something new. We do have our Special Olympics coming up that we work with Stark DD on. Um, we do that every year, we've done that for a number of years. Uh, personally, it's, it's one of my favorites. Um, lots of family members work for DD personally, and I know a few people, so it's, that one's really close to my heart. That one's coming up soon. In fact, it's actually a state qualifying match this year, uh, for the state Special Olympics. This, the last year we get to do that for another couple of years, we'll go back to the regular Stark DD regional after this. So one of the big things I want to talk to you guys about, it's a big thing for us every year, the Fourth of July celebration is pretty close coming around the corner. It's a pretty costly event for us. Um, as a volunteer organization, we do whatever we can to raise our own funds for all the stuff that we do, um, so we don't have to ask the community to give into their pockets to have a little fun with us. Um, that being said, we've looked at ourselves on the inside, and you guys have partnered with us, partnered with us many, many years to do that. Um, we have looked at it, it's, it's very difficult for us to pull that off without some big partners like yourselves. It's just, it's a lot. Uh, it takes a lot of work between the fireworks, the band, the concessions, all that stuff. So as, you know, with your help, we'd like to continue that partnership in the future, so that way the community can enjoy that for many years to come. Like I said, we talk about you guys a lot because as young professionals wanting to grow up and learn, we need mentors. We need people who have been through it, have done the things that we want to do, so that way we can take care of not only ourselves and our families, but others as well. So like I said, the main reason that the chapter wanted me to come and speak to you was to thank you for all that the city does. The schools are awesome, they help us all the time with all kinds of stuff. Like I said, we're celebrating seventy years this year, so we're really excited about that. And hopefully you guys can keep partnering with us and the stuff we do in the future, so we can continue to grow strong for the community over the next seven years. Thank you.
Hi, we're back. Near the end, you own, as we say with the, because we're normally staying at the top, and my thirty-three church street, um, and, um, two?
Two picks, three thirty-eight, West Maple Street. Kathy, are you on, so I'll make you available to you?
So we've put together a little bit better, a little bit more than what we had last time. And if we're gonna leave out with you, that's okay, rather than we did. It shows a picture of our planned layout. Um, it also has some pictures of others, this is like a Walsh and Mount Pleasant Church of the Brother, that's one of their layout. And places that we have picked, we have Charlotte Street. We have, um, the East Bay with all those that we talked about. We have Linwood, where the homes were, which we, I kind of, we kind of talked, don't think that's gonna be one of the best spots because of parking. And then North Canton Middle School. Orchard Avenue north of Hoover Company. Willelman, between Fortage and Maple, and West Maple, we, North Canton parking lot. Those are things that, that's part of the presentation that we have there. We also talked with Todd Henny from the school, and he said that he did not have any opposition to the proposal to use that thing. Of course, it has to go through all of those other fun things that it needs to do, so. Do you have anything else?
No, they're gonna have a copy of all of our proposal.
Right, and Kathy from the Y, also, um, we talked to the North Canton Garden, um, club? Yes, thank you, and they were so on board and so in doubt with everything, and the North Canton Library, Tina, whatever, she's on board, talking with all of that. So part of our proposal is to, um, so we want the kids involved along with the adults, and so the kids can learn that, um, especially don't really come from hackney or just grow out of the ground. I suspect that some don't know that. So I just want to get that, the community involved along with the children, and these type of, um, sort of, so I believe in everybody.
May I give to our clerk? I already got copies for all of us, thanks guys.
I would appreciate all of your support, and I'm so overwhelmed by the community support that I've got. I'm gonna say, just, just maybe, there's a little idea that I have, or a favor.
So anyone else wishing to address council, please step forward. Okay, next thing you have, we will move on to old business. The motion is second to read by title, only the second reading ordinance number twenty-three dash sixteen.
Yes.
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 Thank you, um, Chair.
Uh, talk about the last couple leads, and I talked with Chief today for quite a while. Um, just the pros, the cons, the whys, the ifs, the buts, just, you know, a lot of different things, just to kind of keep the conversation going. And honestly, we're just looking into this, it's a data collection, um, so that we have it, so that we can make four choices and make sure we're doing the best that we can, kind of away with all my questions. So it's a good conversation, and, and any questions?
Motion second.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Keith.
Yes.
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 Thank you, may I have a motion in the second to read by title, only the second reading ordinance number twenty-six dash. Some move, second.
Peters.
Yes.
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 Keith.
Yes.
And associated with children's day-to-day operations, and before you see the meeting.
Thank you, Chair. We had a good opportunity to talk about this a couple of times, I want to say a special thank to the family that was here, to Mark, and to Doug, for their work, putting the contracts together. If there are, are there any other questions or issues raised relative to, on the terms? If there are any questions or issues, then I will need to.
Women.
Yes.
Sir Reddick.
Yes.
Yes.
Reddick.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Seven yes to adopt the second reading ordinance number twenty-six two thousand sixteen.
Thank you, may I have a motion in the second to suspend rules of council for three reads, ordinance number twenty-six dash. Some move, second.
Sir Reddick.
Yes.
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 Griffin.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Seven yes to suspend rules until the third reading, ordinance number twenty-six two thousand sixteen.
May I have a motion in the second to adopt, under suspension of rules, ordinance number twenty-six dash. Some move, second.
Keith.
Yes.
Fontaine.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Sir Reddick.
Yes.
Thank you, may I have a motion in the second to read by title, only the second reading ordinance number twenty-seven dash. Some move, second.
Fontaine.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Sir Reddick.
Yes.
Keith. Seven yes to adopt the second reading ordinance number twenty-seven two thousand sixteen, and ordinance two thousand twenty-sixteen, ordinance number twenty-three two thousand sixteen, to increase the bridge of course even membership and daily missions of the city of North Canton to municipal twenty-four, and we're dealing with any of the legislation based in systems you live in, and it's under the same to be.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, the corollary to twenty-six dash two, uh, twenty sixteen is adjustment to the rates, we found this rate limit last year. I think obviously Ben, and Doug are confident with these slight adjustments that were gonna be more costly looking adjustments. Any questions or issues related to the adjustments to the rates? Good discussion happening. No issue, and I have a move to approve. Second.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Peters.
Peters. Sir Reddick.
Yes.
Yes.
Fontaine. Seven yes to adopt the second reading ordinance number twenty-seven two thousand sixteen.
May I have a motion in the second to suspend rules of council for three reads, ordinance number twenty-seven dash. Some move, second.
Keith.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Yes. Fontaine.
Yes.
And Griffin.
Yes.
Seven yes to suspend rules until the third reading, ordinance number twenty-seven two thousand sixteen.
Right, and finally, may I have a motion in the second to adopt, under suspension of rules, ordinance number twenty-seven dash. Some move, second.
Peters.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Sir Reddick.
Yes.
Yes. Fontaine.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
All right, thank you, that concludes the rest of the official reports, number five. About the community board today. Number where?
Um, just a couple of things, I thought the J.C.'s came today, I remember you were working with Eric Smur. So I saw a little free ice cream cone futons, like they had probably, I was really jealous and, so, I think that's just from my, that's what I did too. He said it was a big hit at the event, and so many people, and the way he distributed, and so I'm cutting things, I was, that was great. So I appreciate you coming and letting us know all the different things you're doing. Um, the J.C.'s were a big part of Canton, my dad was a J.C. growing up, and like J.C. of the year. So that was a big portion of our lives, and so it's great to see that you continue to, and I think you do so much, um, for the city. I think as a council, we need to talk about the fireworks and what we can do to help you as much as we can. Because that's a huge event for the city and the town, and, um, I know how costly that is. So thank you very much for coming. And Naomi, I appreciate your comments, and you give interesting ideas with that. The one question I had, when you said, when you said the one house per block, what was the reason for that?
Well, it would be the development, particularly on Summit and Glenwood, which has seven lots.
Okay.
And all seven of those could possibly, um, apply for new construction.
So you wouldn't just exclude those, you wouldn't want those, or they could be excluded?
Well, I thought the intent was to revitalize existing neighborhoods.
Right.
And so if you have all new construction, or even five or seven in the same neighborhood, are you defeating the purpose?
Okay, that was my question, but I, I like the logic here, so thank you for mentioning those. Okay, thank you. One other thing, Tim, I hope we, I mentioned last time, when we were looking at East Hill and the Zablo project, and we'll be able to talk to Mr. Zablo again, and I'll count him off any of those.
I will.
Okay, did you go by, did you have some?
I will bother you today, it's better.
Did you count them? Was that right? Was that right?
Thank you.
Okay, let me know when we can talk about it. Thank you.
Are they supposed to stick it out here?
Yeah. I swear there's twelve. Are there twelve? Yeah, I didn't know. I said, I was like, I told him last time, I was like, I swear there's ten or twelve. And he's gonna have so much difficulty knowing. I mean, I just know that he's so anxious. We're seeing a good time.
I have one question. I was out on the trail, you know, behind Ball Field and off our quarter. And the new bridge that we built several years ago, it's starting to drop. The bridge isn't, but the, there's a nice big, well, let's put it that way. So are we responsible for like maybe just doing a little, maybe, okay. We were on a bike, so that made a big difference. If you're walking, it's a good deal, but it would be a pretty big little.
Everything's settling.
Yeah. It's like, oh, so just the thought. Other than that, the trail was awesome. And it was so packed yesterday. Oh, my God. You're on fire.
Chair.
I would get a whole lot of comments too. Appreciate the J C's coming and I'm sure that we are happy to collaborate. Yep?
Sure.
A couple of comments. First, a lot of good discussion on this, this housing issue here.
Remember your board come, come in.
Yeah, it is. And I'll make sure. I kind of figured you were rolling back. The other thing is the J C's, and I talked to Jamie last week about that. I think we need to put the word out. Jen, we need to, Jessica, we need to put the word out that we're looking for sponsors also for this and not just throw it all on the city that I, the people would love to put, I would hope to put their name on something like that that's so big and so huge in North Canton, especially during that time of year. Put the word out to say, hey, you know, we'll put your, your name on some things for not just the North Canton J C's thing, but we'll also, so I think that's, get the word out there. I think funding should not be an issue with the amount of people that draws in. And see, for Dave, Sue and Kathy here on that garden thing, I think it's a good homework on that and, you know, I'd like to take a look at even where we put that garden, possibly a dog park with that. And, you know, that would be kind of an intermixed kind of thing. I think we need to look at some new stuff like that. I think it's really exciting for people. So, so those are just some of the comments that came and we can make comments about the, the other stuff. Yeah, that's all I have.
Before you go to the, or I was thinking about that as well. One of the things I thought of, and there's how many people come to the J C Fair every year. You know, you could advertise who was sponsoring those fireworks at J C Fair. So you're gonna get those names out there.
It's on the radio as many times as they play music to it. It's one of our top ten at least, maybe five things in this community that we do. So that's really good job. We still need to word it.
And you've had, I mean, you should know, you've had good success with a number of projects gathering external funds, so.
Advertising, people want to put their name on there. The economy reality is such that that should be a little easier than it was several years ago when we began and they were looking to ask, pay them out for that. So I appreciate the presentation.
Yeah, thank you. Great presentation from the J C's. I'm sure we're gonna donate again. Obviously, I think we started again last year. We'll find a way to bust a hell out, but it is a good point. Area of businesses, corporations, individuals, they can help out too. Cause that's the way it's done in the communities. Appreciate the comments made by the C I R A. Very well, it's, it's good that discussion on this and think about everything and what we're talking about later. On to finish up, we talked, we had a great park board meeting last Monday, which we weren't here that night. And there's a group of North Canton Middle School students who did excellent job. Tresser and Ryan were two of them and they brought up Spartan Park and they have some ready to do the price apart. And what they want to do is kick off a cleanup up there just to start the process. They came to us with suggestions, maybe some updating of the place structures, entrance area, some art in the park. It's their ballroom, so I want them to get more involved. I've been saying they're doing that, doing a great job. I had an intern with them and about, I think eight, ten students showed up and were really behind the, the effort there to do something. So they're gonna have a cleanup April twenty-third at, at the Price Park, South Park, entire park. So if we can list that down there, there was stuff going after corporate April and businesses development. So that's a separate entity as far as cleanup. But I also want to talk about what we want to do as far as North Canton where you clean up. I thought about it April sixteenth. I am fortunate enough to have it twenty-third, where I tried to take it back from there. So I think the two days we should look at is April sixteenth or April thirty. I've talked to Mayor Hubble about that. So I'm okay with the thirty just to get some notice out. It's kind of like Earth Week, turn it into Earth Week. Earth Day is the twenty-second, Arbor Day is the twenty-ninth. So listen, there's never gonna be a great day for everybody, but I think we just need to do something as a community. So what I envision is maybe we'll get some P R on this to meet here at City Hall. We'll do the cleanup from eight to ten. Do sign-ups right outside the door here at parking lot, eight to five. And we'll talk to our log director, but I didn't want with other ones where there is a release form sign. I'll make sure you do that. I think it's a good idea. We're working on sidewalks and streets, especially here in tight, inside entire park for more protected. I want the volunteers to bring their rooms, show us their rates. I think the city can provide, the police will find the best and the garbage rats and do a lot of science. So that's great. We'll have some of the parks cleaned up. And really what I want is I'll lay out where we can go on four doors and help clean up maybe four each main street. Where if there's something in your ward you want to do, I look to elected officials. If you're not doing it again, they come out and help. Some of the city workers themselves, just because you're paid to work in city, doesn't mean you can't volunteer your time also. Maybe we'll put some dumpsters together somewhere, even apartment area in the corner, letting it, West Maple. I don't know if we need five of them throughout the city, but people can bring their own trash and drop it off there. I think that has been successful with that sort of arrangement. But even if you can't go out and work at four doors, I want to make sure the residents and the businesses and just people clean up their front gardens, clean up the front of your sidewalk, clean up the front of your businesses. Maybe don't come down here for two months, but still maybe on a dead day or that week, to beautify your own property. And it could be a Wednesday night activity, but let's, let's really get behind this as a community. You know, if Saturday's more, go pick another time and do it yourself. So I think there's a lot of promise in this, just to get this kicked off this year. So that's what we'll do, we'll look at April thirty. And I would be more happy to, you know, we can charge in, you know, in the department area here, everybody doors, the police department, the city hall, we start on. So we'll get other literature out. We put something on the utility bill, we put this on our website, I think that's what we need to do. But also know that some other great things we're having in the community and some other parks to, um, Spartan Park is, for this student who, who does a good job.
Okay, thank you for this. Very good.
Good idea, man.
Ready for questions?
Yes, I have about five. One, the audit will begin here shortly. We're apparently to bring these versions. The audit will run about two thousand, about the stretch issue here because we don't call it to a federal audit, state audit. And some of you guys have given out, for the record, we can say six hundred and seventy thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars with every financing allowance. Another note from Ohio P P A, Ohio Water Development Authority, the Atlanta Land Water Program, where they're buying down, assist local governments with their interest rates, which means for us as a city, that we will save two hundred and thirty thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars a day, six cents a day, like loans, a long time, a long day through the years. I would have thought the same to the state. And then, our Gail first, who's last day, she's our tax administrator, but formally the last day will be March thirty-first, but tomorrow will be the last present day. And then with that, the note of retirement, I have spoken with President Peters. I am formally announcing my retirement from my position as Director of Finance effective July fifth, two thousand sixteen. I am going to concentrate on my husband's business, we do eligible socials, we do government ties. It has been an honor and pleasure working for all of you and the citizens of North Canton. I will sadly leave, emotional, but I will sadly leave because there's a lot of projects that have been started, but I'm gonna get a smooth process and I didn't talk to President Peters.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Chair, your restoration.
Hard to follow that, yeah. No, it's Karen, because we work a lot of different projects and that's, I'm like driving crazy, so, I'm a late driver, so, so July, I appreciate working with you. We are still working on the streaming video for the council room here, so we forgot about that. Josh and I are still working on that. We've got other meetings set up, there's some technical stuff that we, I think last week I was working for him, I had to draw the council office and everything else here. So, but we're gonna get that going.
Mike, it sounds like there are about forty-four students at North Canton. You might be able to really help you with that.
He says it's gonna get done. It's just a matter of how we're gonna do that and hit it done correctly. So, and this is an odd group, so that kind of broke them off a little bit too. And of course, they're running the electric way up, up into the ceiling here, so. The other thing is we, we do get a lot of good comments on our police and fire, a lot of people see them out when they're at scenes and that type of thing. That's a good thing. But about two weeks ago, we had a large wire break over on Russell Road. Be happy to go by that way, up by Chick's Way, off of the road and everything else. Of course, it happened on Friday, about an hour after everybody got off work. That's just the way those things work. But it was pretty impressive to see all of them out there digging up the road using the machinery that we've gotten and set up the safety zone. And they were all over from, you know, about five thirty that night till about five the next morning. So they're doing a really good job. It's impressive to see them all working together and they're really into the safety end up there and that, so it was pretty good, so. The other thing on dispatch services, the other thing I would ask is what I, my intentions are is to get a bid together and then let you folks see a draft copy of that in case there's any, you think I missed, something I need to clear out or anything else. If all of you called the chiefs all the time with information, that's just gonna slow us down. So I think if I can get the information to you, if I missed something or there's something else you need to know in that bid and, you know, we can clear it up then with the chiefs and, you know, get the data there. But I just don't really need that working for, you know, data and other things when I'm trying to get it. Cause it is gonna take quite a bit to work because we have to work out some processes on how we're going to do it, what, what services would we offer our citizens or not be able to offer our citizens. But I intend to put that together as a draft bid, bring it back so that all of the council can take a look at it first before we can send that out and discuss it or have the chiefs here. Thank you, sir.
Good, yes, Karen, our wish well, your retirement. And, you know, as everybody that, just what you said, we all have areas of expertise and our strengths. And Karen's clearly has been a model of the city. And we continue with our work, putting products every year. And if anybody reads through the catalog or that Karen put together, it's, it's excellent. I mean, that's probably, well, it is the best document that describes the city, our status, our past, our present, and what we're projecting for the future. And if your husband has an audit business too, right? So you can continue with the audits for schools, businesses, money, but it needs a lot of that. You can contact Karen, Karen will, in the future for our business. So I'm a certain one, wish you well. And then also, I'd like to thank Councilmen Fols, we're adding up our spring cleanup this year, April thirtieth, from eight to ten A M. And our Administrator Mike Ryan will arrange for various dumpsters to be announced around the city, there's one, two, three locations. And then we'll have the city that will go along and pick up the bags, you know, whether they're along the streets or however you decide to organize that, we'll be able to make sure that the trash is picked up.
Well, maybe not from here, that they can bring it, drop it off themselves. We have to take some shoes. That's one of the things.
And, and Doug has headed these cleanup projects for years. We'll see the Canton now, Springfield Township, and so it's been a project and he's had good stuff because he knows how to do it. And it will, the city will provide the bags and gloves that we need, you know.
Safety vests.
Safety vests, which we can reuse those year after year. And then we'll just make a community wide effort. This is the first, this is the first time. Then, certainly volunteering, we'll have to volunteer to clean up the park on a number of occasions. That happens very frequently. But this will be the first citywide cleanup that at least since I've, you know, been there over the past fifteen years. So this, this will be the first time that we're doing this a long time, so this will work out really, really well. And then our friends from the J C's, I'm really proud of what you folks do. I mean, it really is incredible. From the parade to the, um, the Special Olympics, to the Fourth of July, I mean Easter Ray, if any of you have been to the Easter Ray hunt, I mean, five hundred children in one location and managing that and then accepting donations and, I mean, really, really impressive work that you folks do. And, and then you're growing too. A lot of, a lot of organizations, volunteer organizations, especially with young people, the fact that you're growing is really impressive. So you've got a winning organization and we really appreciate the work you're doing. And so because you folks stand here tonight to talk about the fireworks, that leads us into another announcement, which we didn't plan on announcing quite so soon, but we are going to have a Main Street Advisory Committee. It's a Main Street Master Plan Advisory Committee. We've talked for years about driving our master plan and coordinate, coordinating the master plan with the Main Street projects, the community events, like the fireworks, the community Christmas tree lighting. And, and what we'd like to do is we're gonna start out with five members, it could grow five to seven members or more. But I've asked Mark Sorata to chair up the Main Street Master Plan Advisory Committee. Mark, as you all know, has really been doing it already. He's been giving his presentations on master plan. And he's also informally served as our Main Street Advisor with the Hoover District Project, particularly the water fencing and Maple Street, along that area. Mark put tremendous amount of work into that. And also is working on the water fountain out front and the Christmas tree and the donation of the Christmas tree. And now also with our fireworks and in a way to come up with money to, what is it, about ten thousand dollars?
We're roughly at that.
Yeah, and, and so mentoring, Mark, he was having to do, he was outraised money. That's what we get for the Yancy race. So anyhow, what happened, that we're gonna be able to, our, well, we will have fireworks. We'll work together and, and we're gonna have, so the Main Street Advisory Committee, Main Street Master Plan Advisory Committee, we're gonna have two members from council that'll serve on that. And we're going to have two members from the administration, which will be our city administrator and also Mike Ryan's. And then we will have a representative, which we don't know who that is here from Master Plan. Yes, well, you, you had, what was that? Two, two administrative staff, Mike Ryan's, Jim and eight is two council members, right? And you guys were with me, right? So two council members, I think we'll have one, at least one member from the Master Plan Committee. And then, you know, we'll, we'll use that to start, but if you want to expand it, then, you know, obviously that'll be up to the chairman, Mark Sorata, and also the other committee members. And then as far as the number of meetings that they'll hold, you know, that'll just, and the agenda, that'll just move along as, as we see fit. But a number of projects that we can think of right now, that we're actively working on right now at the city are the tree planting. We had the Alliance Club that donated all those trees. So we've got to find locations to plant those trees that have been donated. We have Water Fountain, that we're looking to work with on Hoover District Project and Flowers.[1786.24]
Flowers.
Flowers. As a matter of fact, Mark did give me a preliminary list of items, so, you know, that's just the start. So there's going to be a lot, a lot of activity. And then we'll have an annual report on that as far as the progress. But the biggest thing is tying in city projects, the way that the city is here, the city works together, along with the master plan, to make sure that the driving that is not just sitting on the shelf collecting dust. And so that's it. Really excited for the J.C.'s and more importantly, for the city and the Main Street Master Plan Project. That's all I have. Thank you.
David's a good idea. This is all David's idea about this advisory. So the fact that it involved those two guys gives them some meat really of how, where to structure it. So this combination thing is a really good thing because you can't get it all done with one side. So it's just need to see this cooperation as we do a lot to get this thing going. There's a couple of people outside, so it is, you know, we're going to stay on a good direction.
Good stuff.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Do a reporter.
I want to follow that.
That clerk?
Just to update council, Joseph McQueen came to our board game. It was at the Civic Center, kind of off the legs and misinformation, but he did end up where he needed to be. We discussed it. He wants a more high tree over along the skateboard area. We're thinking more of a structure that we previously purchased with our skate wave or another skateboard company. So he gets the prices on that, they're about thirty-five hundred dollars. I think we just need to look this little further as far as where we might be able to put it and go forward. And I don't want a lot of improvements in the park, but that's just one. Very proud of all we've been spending our budget towards our parks. You're such a part of the community, you serve the council. That was addressed, he's taken the lead out, it's just a matter of getting more of that. So I think there's another early discussion with Jim Davis about this city. I don't know if we had line issue, but we'll see where... We asked them to lay out together some artwork we're going to. Because you've got to watch how many things you have in certain areas. But they're the experts, they're going to use it, so they need to give us some footprints as we move forward. Such a good, they ask for the job.
Okay, let's call business council. See you done. I'll take a motion to adjourn this meeting. So would you say, would you say, say aye?
Aye.
Would you say aye, Jerry? Call aboard the special committee, the whole meeting, Monday, March twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen, at eight ten p.m. Sort of police pop roll.
Peters?
Here.
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 Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Thank you very much, first up, I'm sure.
Yes, this is regarding our two properties currently in the CRA with agreements. The committee met on March eighth and reviewed all the information. It was all good to your package as well. Two businesses are LMD property located on eighty-one South Main. Is getting a fifty percent incentive for twelve years. Agreement ends in twenty-twenty, make it compliant, so the committee is... Permitted to continue the agreement. And the next property is funeral home on Pittsburgh. And it's also fifty percent, ten years, and it actually expires beginning this year. But recommended to use me through the rest of the year. They've hit all their numbers as well. So if everybody's okay with that, that'll be on the agenda for next week. Okay. And the next thing on the agenda is the large CRA, citywide CRA. So everybody got the map two weeks ago, right? I have one of their names on that again. Eric, you also spoke to the school board on the sixteenth, and what did they say? Who would mind coming up?
Just add an item one. Those two CRAs ended us total payroll of about one point one million gross payroll and additional sixteen point five, sixteen thousand five hundred dollars in weekly taxes in North Canton. Spoke to the new superintendent after I spoke to the board, Mr. Wendoff. He's looking to meet with me. Just to reiterate, there seems to be some kind of question as to sanctuary and residential component of sanctuary. I believe I spoke to the previous superintendent, I met with him, and I gave him the opportunity to exclude areas on the citywide CRA, and he did one sanctuary. So without any theory, I think I spoke to most of the members of council and all of them about that. So I don't think there's any controversy that people can all participate with the city council. So where we left at is Wendoff, Mr. Gane, Mr. Tolson, and I are going to sit down just like we did with previous superintendent and chat about the expansion of the citywide CRA.
Marc should ask a question. And that, you speak to the sanctuary, you're speaking all the sanctuary, or are we going to include the thirty-seven lots that are phase one and two that have been?
Yeah, 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 all phases, yes, on residential. The phase one, two, which are there right now, phase three, which has been improved at the planning condition and there is starting to grow, then the future phase, phase four. Know that the number of lots has changed because they decided they replanted three and four to make the lots larger because those areas are R seventy, the least dense residential mission we've got.
We had a meeting with the school board last week. It's a couple of people, kind of informed, asked the why, asked me about this reinvestment and helped me understand. And this is only on new construction, right? When we give them these tax breaks, it's not on the total?
No, 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 no.
Because they were misperformed too. They didn't understand, they thought everything was being taken away.
I spoke in generalities. I don't know why they misunderstood.
Yeah, I don't think they had time for questions or anything, but why didn't they get it answered?
Once again, the housing study that we did, you know, we saw that when she folks identified the age right off of that, the current housing stock we have. The primary goal of the CRA is to help people, give them some incentive to renovate the existing parcels. So existing parcels with structures on them. So however people want to do that, hopefully we'll have some other incentives sometime in the future as we move forward. But this is just the first step. Because, and once again, if you take a look at what's happened in some of our surrounding communities with how many homes they have, they're vacant, how many homes they're demoing. You know, the old adage, well, the horses, you know, they've already left. Now you're closing the barn door. I think we need to be proactive. In my career of almost thirty years, I did one of the last section seventeen housing renovation programs. I've done a lot of housing renovation programs on the state small cities, the CPG program, both in rural villages and in cities, little circles greater than the size of North Canton. And one of the things that I always saw is that when we went in and we started doing renovation on single family, owner occupied renovation, one of the things you saw is when you were working down the street and homes were getting bigger, siding, new roofs, new windows and doors. The other homeowners that could afford, and they weren't low-mat in this case, and low-mat is a pretty high number. We're not talking about poverty, but you saw those other folks. They were compelled to make improvements to their homes too, and we did, we saw that. So there is correlation, it's kind of hard to prove. And I spoke to councilperson Heasley and we talked and had him appraiser, give us his opinion on what he thinks the impact would be to the neighborhoods for the CRA. So we should have that in a few weeks, that gentleman is a certified appraiser, has all qualifications. He's going to give us a biased opinion on that because there seems to be some question as to the value of this sort of city. But take a look at a lot of the neighborhoods. You have a lot of seniors in a lot of the neighborhoods that they're getting ready to make that transition to their next housing stock, downsizing. There's our opportunity in this community to bring the younger people and younger families with students that are going to populate the school district. And it's a great idea for us to offer them some incentive to make the improvements to their homes. And Mr. Osborne made a comment that that wasn't the reason he and his wife decided to do the expansion of their home. No question, no question about that. The incentive is not the only reason you're going to make that decision. But it is somewhat a reward to help the families make those decisions if there's something behind it. So if they do buy that home that's thirty-five years old and I had, you know, put a room addition on, you have a couple of kids and want to have that one, it benefits because they grew up in North Canton and want their kids to go to North Canton schools and graduate from the high school. So we need to take, we need to take a look and be conscious of if we're not being proactive, then, you know, we could very well turn around in twenty years. And you may not like what you see. I used to do presentations years ago with communities when I was in the regional past. And people were upset about how the communities looked. I was used to use the example of, you know, you graduate from high school and you're a lean mean fighting machine. And then twenty, thirty years later, you turn around and you gain two pounds a year and you're not happy with the way you look. It's the same thing with communities. You need to keep, you know, making improvements and being proactive.
Let me ask this as an example, because this is what they were a little confused about some of the people. I have a house that says worth a hundred and fifty thousand. And I'm going to put a third, and I pay taxes on that hundred and fifty thousand, right? School taxes, I remember. Now I'm going to put a thirty thousand dollar whatever off there. Okay, I'm still paying taxes on that hundred and fifty thousand thing.
Yeah, that's what...
It's not losing, people are, see, people are a little confused if they're losing, the school's losing. The school's not losing anything that they have. They're just improving whatever that they have and they're not paying for the next whatever.
You're exactly correct. Okay, that's why you'll never hear me use the word baiting. And you'll hear that baiting and people are getting the tax payments. These programs are real property tax exemption programs. It only excludes the incremental increase in the new value. It doesn't reduce your current taxes, it only gives you the incentive on the new value.
Okay, so what does it do then on the Summit Glenwood area? So those are all new builds?
Yeah, that'll change.
So how does that affect?
Well, they may receive a hundred percent for twelve years.
So that's what I was saying.
Basically, what Melanie said is it's, you know, really geared to we have older homes, communities as it transitions, older and younger, whatever, which I agree with that. But like, say like if it was the sanctuary or even Summit Place where there's seven lots, the lots are sixty to eighty thousand dollars anyhow. So, you know, you're paying four hundred and a half for land value only, and you put a three hundred thousand dollar house on that, right? So normally you'd be paying about five thousand a year, you know, forty-eight hundred or five thousand a year for real estate taxes. So you're saying in essence you freeze that for ten years. So you're paying, so that would be a huge incentive for someone to build a home. But I just think in a way it probably would be most beneficial to our city would be the older stock, giving people incentives to do the enhancement of the older stock. But keep in mind, that's small difference between appraised assessment value, at the start kind of otherside, and a slightly different improvement of the enhancement isn't going to change that much. It's just really kind of like a slight incentive for a buyer. You know, if they were thinking about doing a project, maybe they'd start it a little quicker. It's not a one for one, if that's what you're asking. Yeah, I get that. It's a small incentive. I understand what you're doing. He put that investment in his home, and there wasn't a one for one, you know, taxation. No, no, right, that was emotional investment there, you know, for the... But I'm just saying like with, with doing the new construction, that's where we kind of get worked over because we're not, we lose money, they benefit. Am I right? I wouldn't say worked over. You're offering as an incentive to people to do infill. And keep in mind, we can exclude the sanctuary and the main lots that are the playing locals.
Like my son.
And not Joe. Okay, exclude those, but keep in mind, when those two, you know, when those two subdivisions are built out, how do we want to take a, you know, how do you want to take a look at your community? Do you want to encourage infill? Because there might become a time where people decide they're going to buy an existing house and demo it and build a new house. And that's happened in a lot of places in the United States.
Well, let me...
We do, I mean, it says the ordinance will revisit the CRA area every two years. So we could, ten years from now, include the sanctuary again if we'd like to because now those homes are going to serve.
And matter of fact, if you look in the proposed legislation, it's toward a later paragraph. It says that council reviews approximately every ten years.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah, it's in, it's in the legislation.
We do review, exactly.
Yeah, you can review it. As a matter of fact, at that time, if you want to increase or at that time you want to stop offering incentives, then you would instruct whoever the housing officer at that time to do so. And that's, that's in the legislation.
Marc, should I reset to, you said ten, is it?
It's ten.
Is it ten to ten?
Ten.
It's ten.
Pardon me?
It is ten. You're right.
That might have, that might have, I could change that to at least five, that's a long time. And between, that's a much... Now, given that to this new construction, I mean, do we need incentives to be able to build new constructions in our... What do we have left in North Canton now?
Well, we do, we do have vacant lots in North Canton. We have lots that are visible that people may want to take a look at in the future if it's a new lot split. And as long as a lot meets our requirements for the zoning district in R seventy or R fifty, there's an opportunity for new construction.
And that's beneficial, but I guess the question is, do we need incentive for that? I think the beauty of the marketplace that we have right now is that, you know, some place is going to fill. Obviously, there's new construction going on on Ninth Street right now, which is a beautiful house that's very close. No incentive necessary for that new construction. So I would tend to agree that, you know, new construction, I mean, the reality is it doesn't really make that much of a difference either way. If you do it, fine, if you don't...
It benefits the consumer. The consumer has that incentive, it's more protected. Then that's a incentive for them to say, well, we're going to buy a house, so that would be a benefit to them. I consider it always, our rules to be owner, not the developer.
Our average home is pretty high compared to what it is, right, in North Canton? Our homes, I, I was trying to say is people are paying more to live in North Canton. They're buying homes that are probably more expensive to live in North Canton. And why should we give them money to build new homes?
Well, if you're just focusing, let's look at a house on Harvard. The auditor said it's worth another twenty-one thousand dollars. New house, infill, folks came from surrounding the community, they found a lot that were really excited to build that house here. And they had two kids that didn't have their high school, but, you know, they were really excited because they had a park across the street. They also had a good school district. I think you could see more of that. I mean, the house on Ninth Street is a good example. I mean, it's not a seven thousand square foot home by distension of imagination. It's, you know, I think what most of us could consider an average, an average home. But I would discount, you know, in the future, as you look at what's, what's happening around us, you know...
Is that economy based on, I mean, we're going to look at this every so many years. That might change when the economy is in a low, like that was with the race. There, I know that the race was there on, on Harvard Street. The economy was in a bad situation and there was no construction going on. But it was now the construction doing a little bit better, if you want to call it like that, hopefully it's not... It is that way for you, but do we need it during higher economic times? And that's why maybe we need to look at it more often and say, hey, this is the time where we're probably, we have five lots in North Canton left.
No, there's, there's more than that.
Oh, I'm just saying by the time it gets to that point, you know, you might have.
But you might want to think of it this way, and I'm just throwing some ideas out there.
Yeah, no, this is what the discussion...
You know, there's a lot of discussion about millennials out there, okay, right now. You probably read and you've seen things on a number of new shows where you know you have a lot of millennials that view homeownership differently. And plus, a lot of those millennials are carrying a lot of debt from college.
Yeah, they have poor houses.
Earned basements, supposedly.
So, you know, we, we have a great housing stock in North Canton as far as the different options. You have people that can afford a four or five hundred thousand dollar home. You have homes in North Canton that people can buy in March, five hundred thousand dollars. They frankly are pretty nice homes.
That's the beauty of it, right?
Right, so why, you know, there, there might be the decision, it could be a decision by the people that will buy those homes. They, the incentive could make a difference as to if they look at the home with a thirty and forty year bathroom and kitchens as to whether or not they want to make those incentives. I think it's a second line of hope that a bit more than anything else, to be honest with you. Because I don't think the city's going to lose that much by now yet. I think it's just sort of like a promotional type idea to lure more people in to consider our part community. And also to have people want to feel better about spending their little bit of money they do want to spend to enhance the older housing stock. I don't think it was intended for new construction, but that's not gaining, in my opinion.
But fortunately, the higher vice president does need to do new construction, and it has to be part of the CRA. We have to do, look at our math, and we have to exclude a portion of those.
Based on how many of our, they're doing as well as North Canton, we need to base it on our...
But we can't get rid of people's...
Think of it like this, you have a lot here and a lot there in the older community. That's new construction. But when you're in the sanctuary, where it's all new, that's all new construction, and that's to be bad without any...
too bad without any kickstarting. Would you agree?
Yes, we all agree. So we do.
So that's, that's the.
That goes to his point about the raised lot, which is kind of in between a bunch of older homes, the lot just sat there. That might be incentive for that lot, but in an area where people are, you know.
Well, because the new construction, even amongst older neighborhood, does benefit that one. And they have some Ninth Street, both of them are gonna be also different.
The house process, you can do.
Right, exactly.
Oh, yeah.
I think you have to look at threshold, how much the house is gonna be worth in some ways, you know, because I think Ninth Street, uh, Harvard, Harvard's a win if they put it in between fifty-year-old homes. And a house valuation, it would be a meat on this later sleeve. The auditor values a hundred twenty-one thousand, takes about a hundred forty-one thousand dollars on that house. So it's, it's how it fits in. You know, is it worth putting, uh, eight houses together? I don't know. That's something to discuss. Obviously, I think the sanctuary shouldn't be.
Like, like some places, exception, so that's a, you know, few of your cities where they put a premium, so that's, you can't find anything besides that.
But maybe we get to the point where someone tears down a house, puts a new house on it.
That would be good.
That puts a house that's so far gone, it wasn't taken care of.
There's a good point.
So there's, there's something to consider.
I'll give you an example of that. I just saw, this week I was in Arizona and we were, some of those out there, there's a section, an area in, in around Scottsdale, I forget what they call it, but they were, they have such nice lots there, of course, and the views, of course, that kind of thing. But there, there was a construction group that they specialized in taking those old homes down and putting new ones up because they have nice lots and everything. And that increased, that area is one of the toughest areas to get into, even though there's a lot of smaller homes on that, because it raised the value of everybody's home by putting on. And that's the whole idea you were just mentioning.
Correct.
So, you know, that could be a big incentive for people to do something like that, because they have a lot of lots with smaller homes on them too. You don't have a great.
And I usually, I've said before, use my own house as an example, I will approve my neighborhood, maybe a little bit, but I felt strongly that I wanted to live there. We built a cabin, we built a park. And I was hoping other, other residents saw the merit of that. So is there, or someone inside their house, or someone say, I'll build a park or something? Those are the things you need to look at. That's what keeps your neighborhood viable. If someone starts the process, you hope everybody else sees that as an opportunity to operate there and stay there instead of moving away. So it's how we get the investment done.
And I think we all are saying the same.
Same things, yes.
So it's things we need to decide on our, you know, we, your take down between five hundred threshold for the higher vice votes.
Is there a downside to doing that?
No, it'll work. I mean, there's more to work. But that's the other thing is not waiting, why have we waited for one percent? I don't.
That was the original ordinance, nineteen ninety-nine.
Oh, it was before me.
Yeah. Council made that decision. But keep in mind that, unlike other jurisdictions that I've worked in, where Mr. Sater pointed out that there wasn't a lot of work involved in monitoring that. Enterprise zones were even, you know, more difficult at the time for the commercial activities tax. You had to get the tax and work very hard breaking out the actual investment machinery and equipment. We don't do that anymore. Um, this is the first community I've worked for, been here ten, ten years, that we didn't charge for one percent. On the other hand, the, the projects we did on Main Street, which were effectively storefronts, North Canton Plaza, Berry Kindies, especially Berry Kindie, if we didn't waive the fee.
But we can do that in case like.
The fee, the fee was larger, the annual fee would be larger than this tax savings. So he probably wouldn't have done that.
That's the only thing I would consider, which is, you know, one of the reasons that the minimum is as high as it is, is that if you run an R1 project, most people are gonna look at it and say, yeah, for a twenty-five dollar improvement on the property, you're gonna save like twelve dollars a year.
A half.
Yeah. And then if we have the one percent, then that makes it even more difficult. So I think, again, if you wanna create incentives that actually incentivize as opposed to, you know, pat ourselves on the back about creating a project that's not gonna do anything. So I think that's important, where we gotta really recognize that, we gotta do that.
It's good, well, but it won't really.
One, one last thing, let's talk about don't use more than, more than two units. I mean, if somebody eligible put up twenty units, someone eligible put twenty apartment units up in a, in a lot.
Well, I, we, we own that, we're multiple family property, it's own RMF A or RMF B. But, you know, I think the CRA is a powerful tool, as the state always said, because you can use it to remove the light. You can offer incentive of the tax incentive and to help developers perform on to, to buy the light property, demo and build something new, as well as the CRA for commercial industrial that we did, uh, for the ICA, a court issue.
I think it could work in our favorable way. I think we have to be careful with that, in the sense that I just don't wanna rework the wealth, but I mean, it's very, very good with it. It should be about our, our housing structure.
Behind the technology center, I think visitors up back there, the potential apartments might be coming.
Oh, the Menmore site?
Yeah.
Well, that, that, I don't know that for a fact, but yeah, if, if there's no commercial development for the year, like twenty eighteen, the developer, yeah, could decide, uh, under the general business zone, to build apartments. Now, there is a limit on how many units per acre you can build, just per, for our code. It's not, you can't do major apartments with lots of density, because by virtue of that, the code doesn't make that.
Example, where we get the terrible art home behind O'Reilly's, we see now, and there was, that makes sense there.
Right, right.
Not, not more. Because you're taking light, you're changing, that's just open space and putting it in a recording.
Well, we have to match the zoning, so that would.
Right, I understand. I'm just throwing it out there because it's something.
Well, no, that's the apples and oranges or something.
We were saying that you can't limit, new, can't limit to new construction.
Can't eliminate, like the higher vice vote says it is open to new construction, so we cannot.
Keep your profession.
We would, we change that, we change the map. And we're lucky enough in North Canton that we're, we know where new construction is gonna go.
In a same sense, there is someone who modified existing housing complex, I mean, apartment complex, they'd be eligible, which would be a win.
That would be, that would be a light.
Right, so I think we should concentrate on more of that, more new, new construction or, uh, are we able to change the years, it's only ten, five?
We, we can, we can do, yeah, that's.
Is that something, is it a big extent?
I think that's.
We could, we could look at any point in the prior, we should put a trigger in it so that however many years our housing office.
Say around five years, something.
We need a trigger.
Well, it's just like give incentive to a company, compare it's not twenty years, that's a strategy.
Right, but we're just, right, but we're talking about revisiting.
Matt, just this thing, as each hundred.
Which we're creating, creating. Yeah, that's.
Yeah. It would be, I would make it less than that, we'd make it at least every two or three year. It was when we were on, we're on two-year terms in each council, but yeah.
I think we need to check to make sure that's consistent with the code before we decide. One, one thing I would say to the chairs, to the chairs' comments, um, that if you table table for three, um, before you take it off the table, I will have a chance to meet with the superintendent and, and there's also Mr. Hen, and, and basically I'll clean out, you know, issues and questions that group has, and if somebody would like to join me, then, then you can find. Um, but I think find out what they like, or, you know, obviously, the creative superintendent did one of us move sanctuary. They knew who's pretty trusted us, big high school superintendent, they decided like other areas they wanted, wanted to exclude. So when we find out that the school would like to exclude, then, you know, come back and, and those, those choices available to council.
Eric, I appreciate your insight, as I know we were trying to do what before and you, you said some good things, so we're all, I think our knowledge is not bad.
And Eric, we're questioning you because we need to know. And thank you for the information and, and joining the discussion. So we're not questioning you on any, but, you know, your knowledge, your personal, what it, what goes on, because that's not what we give.
You're the expert. You're the expert. I would go ahead and put it on the agenda for committee again in two weeks. If you have more information, then great. If you don't, we can just discuss it again, you know, we'll keep moving, so.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks for your input.
Eric, I'm set.
Good, okay. Uh, we now.
Sure. Okay, streets out. So this was, they were doing, basically what happened was over at Montcello, there was a cul-de-sac and one, the neighbors on each side, there was a lot, a lot, and when they were doing the replant, they realized that at the sewer, they had perpetual agreement. And so we're just cleaning up some new stuff that we found, so I moved it, we added to the agenda.
No defense, no consequence.
There's no.
Any cost, Ed, you're.
Two costs.
Two.
Ed, you're.
So, so.
I'm sorry.
So.
They'll sit down?
Yeah, we're gonna do that.
Next up, finance and property.
Kevin Justine is looking at the pressure series. More on the, yeah, it's Maple West Gate, Walsh District. Jimmy, want to talk about the private?
Sure. Uh, we've been working with, uh, Walsh University regarding a street scheme for the university district over there, uh, East Maple, basically from Mark Court, it started there, we're gonna complete the sidewalk, there's the, the wall on the, uh, south side, I guess, sidewalk. But also using the street scheme elements from the beginning of, of Walsh out to Market Street. Uh, we're looking at putting decorative streetlights out there, improving the sidewalk, completing the sidewalk, putting in a center boulevard, uh, landscape, the center, uh, streetlights that are decorated and match the side streetlights. But we have an overall plan. Uh, this is, we have one of it, that's the west gate, relocating, uh, the driveway, put these into the Hoover historical building there, relocating that to the west gate entrance, moving it west, uh, approximately two hundred fifty feet. And Walsh will move that driveway, but we're doing the improvements to the intersection. Uh, we have two hundred thirty-three thousand dollars, approximately, municipal load funds, uh, three, four counties, grant for that amount. We knew we didn't have enough money when we put the budget together last year, we didn't know exactly how much, we wanted to go ahead and bid it out. Uh, the prices came, did come in a little higher than we expected. Uh, part of that is because of the maintenance and traffic. Uh, there's a big item on that, you can't close the street down, we're rebuilding the intersection, and to maintain that traffic is gonna be costly. If you look at the, the mid tab, uh, you can see that, that's a very expensive item. All total, maybe about a hundred fifty thousand dollars, just to make this traffic. If you close it down, you save a significant amount of money, although that would be accrued to the businesses out there, uh, even though, you know, it might be a little, you close it down for a week. Uh, so with that, you know, uh, we do have money in the account, the ordinance we passed was only for two hundred fifty thousand. But there is money in the camp, we don't have to appropriate it for any kind of funding, not appropriate.
So about a hundred sixty thousand.
We had a hundred sixty thou, thirty-eight thousand dollars in storm fund, because we are improving the storm system in that area. It will not, it will not be a traffic signal at this time, it will be set up with traffic signals in the future, should the traffic demand for it. All the underground cables, the foundations, the posts, the traffic poles will be there. Intersection will be lit, we'll have decorated lighting there, uh, for the intersection.
It's on.
Uh, I mean, I know it's on the stone, yeah, but the trajectory of this corridor are really sharp, so there's a little bullarded area with plants or whatever.
Right.
Would that hinder the traffic flow because, you know, it gets a little congested up at that end?
Right.
So are, are we accounting for that somehow or another?
Right, right now, you have a, a center turn lane for the, for the whole distance from Mark Court to Market. Uh, you don't need all of that center turn lane for traffic. You need, depending on the intersection, a distance back from the intersection. Some intersections only maybe fifty feet, some you might need a couple hundred feet. And we've looked at that, a preliminary study of that, where we can put boulevards and decorative, uh, decorative developments in those boulevards.
Can you bring the layout, then, so we can see something visually? I know we, Mark, I guess, we've done, we've looked at it, just to show us exactly.
Yeah, you should do that. So how do, it's like.
Something, Eric, I'm sure, it's just my idea.
There's a central map, right?
It was, it was part of the timetable, how would this coincide with the lighting, you know, accounting on, on Market? Uh, we, well, it's more a function of the, of the university, and getting this done after school closes and before their summer programs start. So we've identified that at that time, we, uh, if it's the end of May, beginning of June, when we need to get in there, contract at a certain period of time, you know, the restrict traffic and how much traffic's gonna happen. So the timing is, is essential. We don't wanna carry that too far. So, but it shouldn't affect, uh, the work on Market, they're not gonna be starting significantly on that later this year.
Jim, explain a little bit, but just so you know, they're gonna bring the, the intersection down to the apartment. I mean, we're looking down at the future now, this is the total plan, this is just the beginning of this Walsh district here. And Walsh is planning to build a building out there, I forget how many, no names that are expected. So this is a kind of the beginning of a major reconstruction that's gonna want it to, you know, kind of increase the, a lot of things out that way for us too. Walsh is probably what our number is, one or two, what, whether it's amount of people or whether it's money, I don't know, there's two numbers.
It's not only the university, it's also the commercial district that's out there, Jim.
Exactly. The backing up there is, right now, if you go down there, four blocks.
Four.
So, you know, based on the information and the people here, that should help that a lot, especially with the white and both of the roads up that way. Uh, this is our portion, really, of the side here, to make this what we want it to be. Uh, I've, I've said in some other meetings with the, the university district, and I, I think it's just, you know, fantastic. It's another side that's gonna really make that area just bloom over there and add a lot of class. And our job after that, looking down is to combine them two. And how we get from here to there, from the district to, to the Walsh, it's just a gimmick, just kind of thing. So, I know this came in a little bit more than, than we thought, by, by far, uh, and that's kind of out of our hands. And, you know, if you wanna start cutting on some of the things, I don't know, I'm looking at, I don't know what you could really cut that we really wanted to have on that way.
Right. I'd like to add something also, you know, that this project really has been years of making. Mike Grimes, Jim Benikas have been working with Walsh University and Lenoda for a number of years on this project. And so not only is it one of our fastest growing regions as far as economic development in the city, which this will just further enhance some of our economic standpoint, Washington Square, but there's also improving the traffic flow. So maybe, um, Jim, if you could add the, the design engineer, make recommendations, um, for the, the planners and, and that area, maybe if that person could come in, uh, if But there's also improving the traffic flow, so maybe, um, Jim, if you could have the, the design engineer make recommendations, um, for the, the planners and, and that area, maybe if that person can come in. Uh, if they're available, just to let council and everyone know that, hey, this is a good plan, and why, even though we're going to be, uh, putting up, you know, those areas where trees are in the middle of the roadway, why this is a good thing. But there's also the safety component too. So Walsh really was very concerned with how the pedestrian traffic goes back and forth to Washington Square. So with the barriers in the middle, it forced our traffic to the students, the pedestrians, because sadly, we did have, um, students that were hit, just, you know, jaywalking across that area, and they really weren't using the tunnel. Like, we had planned years ago, I think it goes back to the nineties, with that tunnel. So this really is economic development, and there's a major safety consideration and improvement of traffic flow. But maybe if we get the design engineer to, to put this together, uh, they can answer the questions for council, and in that way, it just kind of reassures everybody that this is a good positive plan. But Richard Giselle, he loves this plan, and he loves Jim Benikas, and, uh, because he's been very complimentary of Jim and how he's worked with, and also with Mike as well, and so, Jimmy, mentally, so this will be a really, really positive plan, for the city.
That's all.
So, but, but we come to the end, you're gonna bring in somebody, we've got this on the emergency, we need this for a, a movement that's quicker than normal, or...
Yes, so we can get the project, we can get the border control, we can, what's it, contractor.
So we can get some, some, um, plans, and that's, or if we take a look at this thing, it's going to be in this, it'll move, the, also, the, the building and things that they plan on building out there too, this, this is only a portion of part, this is not the entire plan.
Right.
Everybody needs to be, especially this group, needs to be on that, so let's do that.
Sure, very, very...
Well, before I close, I just wanted to say a special thank you to, um, I have some, this is her very much, she does fantastic things, you see, several, seven hundred thousand dollars just to...